Good evening, good evening, good evening. And welcome to our February regular meeting. Barb, can you call Row, please?
Sure. Mr. Babbitt?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mrs. Johann?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Reagan?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Here.
We all please stand and join me in welcoming Kari Gerudo Gerado to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
... America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. McMullen?
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Latha Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel it is important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the Board to work with the Superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we request that audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting, except during recognitions. This ensures the Board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, sir. And if you all don't know this, Dr. McMullen has a birthday coming up. Moving on to Agenda Item 1.03. Mrs. Johann, would you please walk to the front of the room? Last night, Becky was appointed to fulfill the remainder of Mr. Connell's term, so the Board appointed her last night, and she will get sworn in this evening.
In accordance, therefore, with said Kansas statutes, would Rebecca Johann please raise your right hand, and after hearing the oath of office, respond collectively by saying, "I do." Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of member of the Board of Education, Unified School District 233, so help you God? Congratulations.
Mom and Dad, you're welcome to jump up and get in a picture.
That's right.
Right here. One, two, three.
Yeah, come on up. Hi.
One, two, three.
Nice.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 2.01. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Dr. Yurkovich.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0. Moving on to your recognitions and awards.
Yes. Okay, well, we have some very special guests with us tonight, so to kick us off, we are recognizing the Olathe Northwest Raven Dance Team for winning its second state title in program history. So I'd like to invite Head Coach Shannon Summers and the 2324 Raven Dance Team to the front, along with any administrators, our district A.D., the whole crew. Well, this team took home the 6A state title after earning a total score of 93.67, finishing with top scores in eight out of nine categories. In Kansas, dance has awarded state titles for only the past four years, which means that Olathe Northwest has earned half of the titles. Last month, the Raven Dance Team competed in regional competitions in Missouri to prepare for Nationals and were crowned regional champions. The four-day national competition is in Orlando in March, with dozens of competitions spread across several categories. Olathe Northwest will look to continue their success on the national stage, so please join me in congratulating this very special group of young ladies. For this next recognition, we want to give a shout-out to one of our outstanding community partners, Main Street Credit Union. At this time, if I could have President and Chief Executive Officer Bob Mays and Community Relations Officer Jillian Miller up to the front, along with our Director of Community Engagement Heather Schoonover. And Ms. Cindy Von Felt. In 1953, a group of teachers chartered the Northeast Johnson County Teachers Credit Union. Today, their commitment to the educators who helped launch the credit union remains evident in the support they provide to Olathe staff and students. Main Street Credit Union underwrites the Olathe Public Schools Foundation's Educator Excellence and Classified Employee Excellence Recognition Awards each month, providing a $500 check to each of the staff members receiving the award. For years, they supported the Administrative Assistance Annual Back-to-School Lunch and Training, and they were one of the very first businesses to sign up to support the Foundation's new educator reception. Additionally, they have supported the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Golf Classic and the Annual Autumn Breakfast. Their support of the district's foundation is an investment in staff throughout the district and to students and families. Local staff from the credit union branches volunteer at events and in schools, and over the past 25-plus years, their support has totaled more than $400,000 in financial and in-kind support for our staff. Main Street Credit Union is a consistent valued partner to Olathe Public Schools, and we cannot thank them enough. Please join me in a big round of applause for Main Street. At this time, I'd like to ask the Olathe West Girls' Cross Country Team up to the front, along with their head coach Kelsey Carvajal, and any Olathe West administrators, along with our district A.D. I'd also like to invite Olathe North Senior Anjali Hocker Singh and her coach Levi Huesman to the front. Well, the Olathe West Team has accomplished a historical feat that few have accomplished, winning a state championship four years in a row. The Lady Owls Cross Country Team was crowned 6A state champions at Rimrock Farm in Lawrence back in October, delivering a team score of 45 points to beat out state runner-up Olathe North. The road to glory began in 2019 after they turned their first trip to state into a runner-up finish. Since then, they have not turned back, claiming their first state title in 2020 on the way to four straight. Now, she's not here tonight, but Anjali also was able to place individually and had a four-peat herself, so this is the fourth year that Anjali has received an individual state title, and she is one of only seven in the state of Kansas to ever do that. So congratulations to Anjali and to our friends here at West. Always good to ask. Okay, well, then you guys are dismissed. Well, we are keeping up with our athletes, so for our next recognition, I'd like to invite Olathe Northwest Junior Emmy Keller, Olathe North Senior Lindsay Ray, and Coach Amanda Harrington to the front, along with our state gymnastics champions. Well, the Olathe North Gymnastics Team delivered its highest score of the season at the state gymnastics meet in October, clinching the team's third 6A title in the same number of years. Olathe North scored 109 points, beating out state runner-up Lawrence High School by more than four points. Senior Lindsay Ray earned first place individually in beam and floor, while Junior Emmy Keller won her second straight all-around state title after delivering a career-best score of 38.1. She also placed first in bars. As Coach Harrington said, she's extremely proud of the team, and it shows their consistency over the last three years has remained the same. They have worked as hard as possible in the gym. Please join me in congratulating these girls. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, tonight, we have the Olathe Mayor's Children's Fund Board here to tell us about their 2023 campaign. Every penny they raise stays right here in our community to meet the basic needs of Olathe children. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mayor John Bacon and Board Chair Deanne Inkstrom.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here and say a few comments. This has been a really big year for the Olathe Mayor's Children's Fund. We owe top $2 million in all-time contributions to the fund, so yeah, we can clap for that. Thanks to the generosity of this incredible community, we've been able to put that money to work to improve the lives of thousands of children and their families. But that's in all. Also this year, Pennies for Shoes all-time donations topped $300,000, so awesome. And the 2023 Pennies for Shoes total is $31,612.92, so yeah. So year after year, we are in awe of how much money our school community is able to contribute to this fund. Pennies for Shoes is always our top donor, but we know that it's much more than that. We've seen schools come together to find new and unique ways to raise money, and while doing so, spreading awareness about the needs in their community and learning just how good it feels to help those who are in need. And that's really what Pennies for Shoes is all about. It began as a way to give our families an opportunity to support the fund and learn about the incredible, important work our charity partners do. And as we learn each year from these students, we accomplish so much, we accomplish so much more together. This money will go to help support the basic needs of children through 14 local charities. With your help, more kids will have shoes that fit their feet, warm socks and underwear. The fund will also ensure that they have food on the table at dinner, a warm coat for the winter, a bed to sleep in, and a roof over their head. It's hard to believe that we have these needs in Olathe. Thank you to the students, the families, the teachers, administration, and of course the school board for your steadfast support of this fund. We couldn't do what we do without the community, our community support. Thank you for yours and for setting such an outstanding example for others in the process. So tonight, we have a few individual schools we'd like to recognize, so at this time, I'd like to introduce one of our board members, Val Bentley.
Thank you so much, and thank you, guys, for allowing us to come out and everybody join in the celebration of the success of Pennies for Shoes. And like the mayor said, over $31,000 are students raised for their fellow classmates. I mean, like, that is amazing. But there always has to be some standouts, so we're going to recognize those tonight. And our elementary schools this year, I believe it is the first time that they won, it is Brom Elementary, they collected $2,195, which was up $148 from last year. So today, representing the school is Principal Stephanie Conklin, Counselor Deb Clegg, and some students from their student body. Thank you, guys, so much, and congratulations, and hang out for a group picture in a second. So our middle school is not a stranger to this campaign. This year, they raised $4,958, which was up last year from $488 from last year, and that equals about $8.62 per student. Rick Sola and your crew, come on up. Thank you, Chisholm Trail, and congratulations. Okay, and then our high school this year is Olathe East. They raised $2,319, which it was up a drastic amount, $2,259 from last year. That is approximately $1.27 per student. Principal Carrie Lane and your crew, come on up and congratulations. And also, while we're taking the picture, a big thanks to Harland Parker and Jim Hutchison. They are the people who started Pennies for Shoes a long time ago. And thank you, Dr. Jill Smith, and our amazing district for all of your support. We couldn't do it without you. Awesome. Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 4.01. We have a school spotlight. Tonight is Scarborough Elementary School, so let's welcome Principal Mike Burroughs.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk to you tonight about Scarborough. Tiny bit about me. I'm a parent myself in Olathe. I've got a fifth grader and a first grader, so heaven forbid, we've got a middle schooler coming up. I think I can handle it. But so I already knew Olathe was a great district before I even joined the team last year, but after I've joined the team, just being able to see how the district supports the schools, the way the schools collaborate with one another, it truly is a privilege to be a part of this team. It's also a privilege to be able to talk to you tonight about some of the reasons that Scarborough is special and what I love about being principal there. So a little bit about Scarborough. We hover right around 300 students. We're pretty much 50/50 on boys to girls. What I think is special is we have some specialty programs in the building. We have our early childhood program, so those three- and four-year-olds, they come in and they have a lot of energy, and they bring a smile to my face every day. Something that's really unique about Scarborough is our Deaf and Hard of Hearing program, which is such a neat thing for me. I didn't have a lot of experience with this type of program before coming to Olathe, and seeing how the teachers work with these students, seeing how they learn, it's been a learning experience for me. And it's just so cool just to watch them grow year after year, something pretty amazing. Some of our clubs that we, clubs that we have, in addition to Band and Strings, we have our Special Chorus. Our Running Club runs in the fall and in the spring. We have our American Sign Language Club, our Math Wings, and then our SC in Action, which are some of our student leaders that come and focus their work on the community. I have to shout out our staff because the staff is what makes Scarborough what it is. You know, their dedication to students, that's second to none, but something that really caught my eye in my time at Scarborough was just how much we all care about each other, even though it might sound a little cliche. I really do feel like it is a Scarborough family, and it's just amazing to me, just whenever there's a staff member in need, somebody's there in a second. If we're short one place, somebody's there without a second thought. Several staff members I didn't even know were coming showed up today to help support, so they truly are amazing. I also have to give, of course, a special shout-out to my front-office staff because we all know I could not do my job without them, so it's just amazing to be part of this team. It really is. A few of our school-wide focuses this year. In ELA, we really focused this year on a all-hands-on-deck ELA intervention block, so the majority of our grade levels are all doing ELA intervention at the same time, which then allows us to give more support to those grade levels, so we have specials teachers, we have instructional assistants, our library clerk. We have multiple staff members that are able to go in and really work with those grade levels to help kiddos out, whether it's on phonics, fluency, any of those reading needs. Tier-two vocabulary is another focus we had, making sure that they have that enriched vocabulary in their everyday lessons. In math, we focused in on schema-based instruction, which is a way to solve word problems. So the goal is hopefully, year after year, students are taught how to solve word problems in the same way, so then hopefully it gets a little bit easier for them and just becomes routine to them. And then socially, emotionally, this is our first full year of PBIS implementation, which has been a lot of fun. Our three main expectations at Scarborough are we are responsible, we are respectful, we are safe. I would venture to guess you could ask just about any kid at Scarborough, and they'd be able to tell you that. They hear me say it every single day on the announcements. Our Lancer Loot is pictured there, so that's our positive reinforcement that we use, and students can use it to purchase all kinds of different things, from PJ days to an extra recess to even lunch with me, which I don't know why they want to spend their money to have lunch with me, but I'm glad that they do. We have a lot of good times, and it's nice to be able to sit down and speak with them beyond what's happening in the classroom, so it's a lot of fun for me. Every year, at the beginning of the year, they go through our expectation stations. We kind of piloted it in January, and then we kept it going this year. So myself, specials teachers, classroom teachers, our school counselor, we all take different stations, and they rotate through, and they get to learn what it means to be responsible and respectful and safe in the cafeteria, in the wet area, wherever it may be throughout the building. I know I said this a little bit earlier, but the collaboration with schools, I think, is second to none. We feed into Indian Trail, and Mr. Barakman is a pleasure to work with. They came and visited us last month, and they performed for us at our school. Pictured there in the bottom-left-hand corner there is the district site council meeting that we had back in the fall, and so our feeder schools got to all get together and talk about how, how we can maybe think of something we could all do together and what we do at our different schools. Right now, we're in the plannings of hopefully trying to get a feeder pattern, maybe movie night together in the spring, so looking forward to hopefully making that happen. And then, of course, we do our professional development with some other schools as well, so it's really fun to be able to meet with other schools and hear different points of views from other Olathe teachers. So SC in Action I had spoken about are some of our student leaders that really focus in on the community, so I have some very special guests here from our SC in Action team that would like to share with you what they do with SC in Action.
Hi, my name is Warren Viterina. I joined SC in Action because I like helping people and keeping the environment clean. One of my favorite community service projects this year has been the park cleanup. We ran around and picked up bits of garbage dumped in the area around our school, a nearby creek, and the parks close by. Some of the things we found made it an interesting job. I liked helping keep the environment clean and beautiful for everyone to enjoy. In October, we collected an assortment of candy for the, for the Olathe police officers to thank them for their service to our community. Personally, I liked that project because we worked together as a group to get all the bags filled. It was genuinely amazing to get to see the police officers and know we were doing something good for them. Our project for November was collecting foods such as brown sugar, sweet potatoes, green beans, and other items to make a Thanksgiving meal. These items were boxed up and donated to Scarborough families in need who would otherwise not have had a good Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bailey Harding. I joined SC in Action because I love helping people in need. One of the activities we did this year was ringing bells for the Salvation Army to help people in need in our community. We took shifts ringing bells, singing songs, and greeting people at Walmart. One of the things I liked about this project was having fun and helping people in need at the same time. Another activity we did this year was Choose for Shoes. We collected money for people in our community who could not afford shoes. Students could pay $1 to buy a piece of gum to chew at school that day. All the money we received was donated, donated to the Mayor's Pennies for Shoes Fund. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Stiers. I joined SC in Action because doing things for others is one of the things I love most. We have several community service projects coming up this semester. We will be making dog treats this month to give to, to give to the Olathe Animal Shelter. We focus on different community needs each month. I've always loved animals, and I'm excited to do something for the animals in our community. Each year, SC in Action holds a pop tab collection drive during the month of April to benefit the Kansas City Ronald McDonald houses. Families collect pop tabs all year and bring them to Scarborough in April. The three grade levels will win an extra recess supervised by SC in Action. The tabs we collect are donated to the Ronald McDonald houses to be recycled. The money they receive from the recycled tabs helps with the daily expenses of the houses. As our final project and field trip, SC in Action will be holding a drive to collect personal care items for the, for the SC Action Starfish Project. Here in Olathe, we will take these items to them in May and spend the morning volunteering there. We may help with packaging dignity bags, making mats for the homeless, stocking food, or any other needs they have that day. It has been a busy and fun year so far, and I'm excited for the projects we have coming up. Thank you.
All right, so kind of staying with the community partnership theme, I also want to recognize our community partners at Scarborough. Commerce Bank, 159th and Merlin Branch, The Muffin Group, and Table KC, a local church. We've worked so well with them over the years, whether it's providing weekend food bags for some of our families, adopting families at the holiday times, supplies to help go into our clothing closet that we have housed at Scarborough.
into our clothing closet that we have housed at Scarborough. They've just been amazing partners to work with, so I definitely want to recognize them. Also, our PTO Site Council group has been a pleasure to work with. Our vice president is actually here today in the back. And so, they've just been awesome to work with. And one thing that's always kind of impressed me about this group is their drive to not only get parents into the school, but to provide free events for parents. So, we've got our Spring Fling that we do, our family movie nights, and then this next Friday, when school is out for professional development, they're actually sponsoring free ice skating down at Crown Center for our families so that they have something to do on the day off. It goes late into the evening, so even our staff members can go with their kids later when they're off work as well. So, that's just kind of a tip of the iceberg of all the things that they do for us. I also want to recognize our Olathe Public School Foundation. Some of the things that we've gotten as of late are some Quest materials for the Quest Classroom, scooters for our PE, so much more that I'm sure I'm not even thinking of. Pictured there is our Major Savers Kickoff Assembly that we had just a few weeks ago. We just finished that up this week. So, the kids had a lot of fun selling those Major Savers and getting all their cool prizes that they got to bring home. Had some sticky squid guys going down the walls at my house as well, so it was definitely a lot of fun. We have amazing volunteers. So, our watchdog dads, they're just the best. They're greeting kids in the morning, they're working with kids out in the wet areas, and if we have any kind of evening event, you can probably bet that there's going to be a watchdog dad there helping set up and they make my life so much easier. So, I really very much appreciate them. Some of our PTO members are pictured there in the bottom-right-hand corner there. They are a very fun group. That's our Chiefs Bingo Night that we had this year. And again, they're just a pleasure to work with. And then our community volunteers, we have a lot of people from the community that come in and they just want to work with kids and we love having them in there, really in the best possible way. Scarborough is like a revolving door of community members just coming in all the time, just wanting to love on kids and just help out in any way that they can. So, we really very much appreciate them. Those are some of our fun events that we do. Color Run, our bingo nights, our school carnival. So, we definitely like to have fun at Scarborough for sure, but not just the kids. Also, the adults like to have fun too at Scarborough. So, our Color Run's our big fundraiser for the year and so I always like to try to incentivize the kids a little bit. Couple of years ago, we met our goal and so every single kid in the building and some teachers got a nice colorful sheet of duct tape and they got to duct tape me to the wall there. It was quite the experience. This year, I dressed up like a lancer and served lunch to everyone as well. And then, you know, again, kind of talking to the staff and how cool and fun I think that they are. I've never been part of a staff that adopts a whole Halloween staff-wide theme. So, this year, we were teacher Barbies and Kens. Very good time. I have to give a shout-out to Steph Hurrell, one of our kindergarten teachers, because those of you that have seen the movie, there's a Mojo Dojo Ken. And so, she gave me that white fur coat there that I had to sport that day. It was a lot of fun. We had a really good time. But why we do it all is pictured right here, I think. From the first day they step in at Camp Kindergarten till they return to us as seniors, we recognize what an important job that we have. We know they're going to leave Olathe, whether it's college or the workforce, they're going to go do amazing things. And we take it very seriously, making sure that we're getting them off to the best start possible on their educational journey. So, I know I've told you several reasons why I love Scarborough, but I have a short video here of some of our staff and students sharing why they love Scarborough.
One thing I love about Scarborough is that it always helps you more than a time of need, just in case you're feeling yourself in a situation where you're struggling, they always have a best friend in the situation.
What I love about Scarborough is our wonderful community of parents and our peaceful organization who does a lot to pull our community together and we are one big tool in our community.
I love Scarborough just because they're so young.
I love Scarborough because it's our Scarborough.
One thing I love about Scarborough in my face is the nice teachers.
I love how welcoming and kind Scarborough is.
One thing I love about Scarborough is that we are inclusive of everybody.
We are Scarborough, we are nice, kind, and true, and we always do our best. We're respectful of our school and the world, we're good and we're every day. We are positive and we're everyone. At our school, we have lots of fun. At Scarborough, we're family and we'll show our red and blue. Go Scarborough!
We are.
Responsible.
We are.
Respectful.
We are.
Safe.
So, I would also like to give a shout-out to Mrs. Sarah Huey, our music teacher. She recorded our fifth graders there doing the school song and I very much appreciate her doing that with them. So, to close out our presentation, I also have some very special guests from our American Sign Language Club that would like to share with the board some of the things that they love about Scarborough in sign language.
I love Scarborough because everyone is included. I love Scarborough because everyone is family. I love Scarborough because we are respectful, responsible, and safe. Thank you, Olathe School District, for preparing us for our future.
Well, thank you again for giving us a few minutes tonight to share what's special about Scarborough. That concludes our presentation. Pending any questions from the board.
Board, any questions?
I just want to say how cool it was to see the teachers along the back doing the motions with the song.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to agenda item 4.02 to welcome Becky and the comms team.
As they're making their way up there tonight, we often hear about Tony Arangel and know he's in our meetings, but usually through the technology in the room. So, we have the man alive and in person tonight, which is exciting.
It's a big deal. And I didn't know we were going to be following Mojo Dojo Ken and perhaps the coolest kids around, so we're going to try to do it justice, but you know. Well, thank you, guys. We're so excited to be here tonight to talk to you about a project that kicked off earlier this week that we are super passionate about and very excited about. Before we dive into it, though, we wanted to start off with a quick video that kind of helps set the tone for this project and what we're hoping to accomplish.
Well, gosh, every time I watch that video, I get more excited to start on this process. That was shared with our staff and families earlier this week to kick off the campaign along with a video from Dr. Jaeger inviting people to participate. And Tony's going to share more with you today about our process that we have in place, but I wanted to take a moment to talk to you kind of about our why and how we got here and why we're embarking on this process. And truly for me, the timing of this rebrand feels so natural, knowing what's on the horizon for public education in Kansas specifically. As we look at next year and we know that we have open enrollment coming up, we know that we're going to be competing against our neighboring communities for students who are looking to choose the schools that they enroll in. Having a strong visual brand and marketing campaign is going to be crucial to that. In my 10 years as working as a school PR professional, marketing has not always been something that's been at the forefront of the communication work that we do. And I say that because school districts like Olathe Public Schools have been looked at as destination districts. People choose to move here because of our public schools, because of the programs that we have, the amazing staff members and teachers that we have and our high-achieving students. And so, in that sense, our district has always kind of sold itself. But we know that the landscape of education is changing and that we do have those open enrollment policies. And like you heard last month from our HR folks, recruitment and retention of teachers is harder than ever. We're competing against people locally and nationally to recruit and retain top talent for our classroom. And so, as we think about that, that idea of marketing all of the sudden is pushed to the forefront where we're really needing to be intentional with our efforts and how we brand ourselves and present ourselves to prospective families and staff members who are looking at a place where they want to call home. And we want that to be Olathe. And so, that has really been a strong foundation for why now is the right time to look at our brand. As you can see here, you know, strengthening our visual communication and building our brand is listed there at the top. And we are excited to go on this visual journey. A lot of times when you think about a rebrand, it's those visual components. So, updating your logo, refreshing your brand colors, those visual components. But for us, it's about more than just that visual piece. It's really about making sure that who we are as an Olathe community is reflected in our brand. And so, that's why community engagement has been such a large piece of this project. And Tony's going to talk about that a little bit more later, but that's something that makes the Olathe community so special is how engaged we are. We have such a supportive community and so for us, it was crucial that they are involved from the bottom level, from the very first day, as we think about what Olathe Public Schools means to us and we reflect that in our new visual identity. We also know that as a district, we want to be able to reflect our strategic plans. So, again, in our strategic plan, we have key outcomes around recruiting and retaining staff. And so, how can we support that as a communications department? For us, that's branding. We also have key outcomes around communication and so obviously, this would fall underneath that. So, that's kind of our why. And if we stay true to that through this process, our hope is that we're able to achieve some of these outcomes. First and foremost, that our stakeholders feel ownership in this process. Like I said, we are going to be engaging our students, our staff members, our community members, our business partners, our volunteers, anybody who lives in our community, we want to hear their voice and have that reflected through this process. And obviously, that will create engagement. We also want to create consistency and efficiency. And I think that as one of the largest employers in the area, if you look at other folks, other companies who are our size, their communications department has a more comprehensive branding suite for their staff members. Oftentimes, as the second-largest school district in the state, the largest in the metro area, we're looked to as thought leaders who are often asked to present at different conferences and really be out in the forefront of education. But our staff members are having to create PowerPoints from scratch. They're having to create their presentations without a true visual brand that is cohesive in Olathe Public Schools. And that's doing a disservice to our staff members, but also not representing Olathe Public Schools in the way that we would hope that we could. Establishing our brand personality, we've never really taken an opportunity to look at that. You know, a logo can be so stagnant, but this is an opportunity to truly give a voice to who we are as Olathe Public Schools. And so, that's going to be a really fun part of this process as well. Something else I want to be sure to hit on too is that Olathe has such a rich history and pride in who we are. And so, as we embark on this process, we're looking at how we can reflect that and honor that in whatever we come up with moving forward. We certainly know that it's an important piece of who we are as a community, but we also want to reflect ourselves as an innovative district, a thought leader, and someone who's truly preparing students for their future. And so, how can we represent that visually while also honoring our past? To do that, like I said, there's going to be some community engagement, but we've also partnered with a creative consultant, Mammoth, the Creative Co. And that may sound familiar to you. They have helped us in other capacities in the district. They helped us with our turk replacement, which we were very pleased and surprised to find out that there is a creative component to their company and they do have folks who can help with that. So, they're here tonight and are going to be able to speak a little bit about their role in this process, but we're very pleased that the lead on this project is actually an Olathe South graduate. So, someone who truly knows our community, grew up here and understands where we're coming from. That's been a great addition as they consult with us throughout this process. So, that's a little bit about the why and the how we got here. And I'm so, so excited for you guys to get to hear from Tony tonight. He's truly the wizard behind the curtain and for him to be here in the forefront. I'm so excited for you to hear about the process and how we're going to engage the community throughout the next couple of months.
Thank you very much. First of all, lower your expectations. Not about the project, about the way I presented. Secondly, it looks different from this angle, I'll tell you. So, to piggyback on some of the things that Becky said, what it really boils down to is that the real drivers in here, in this project, come down to recruitment, efficiency, and consistency. And those are the things where as a communications department, we weren't really providing enough resources for our district in those areas. And I've been with the district since 2005 and I think that the communications department was formed shortly before that. So, we, the communications department has been working through a time where the Olathe Public Schools went through some explosive growth and we're just trying to keep up. So, this is a time, we've had some really key investments in some positions in our department where we have the ability to provide, to be more of a resource for our internal departments. And I'm really excited about that because I think it's somewhere where we have the talent and the capability to do that. So, coming back to the project here, in the beginning of this discussion, we, I talked to several different companies about working with us on this project. And my big ask from them is to be more of a partner in this project, rather than turning everything over to them and having them form their own focus groups and, you know, hold these, you know, on their own, involving a lot of, you know, key stakeholders. But from the way we communicate and work with our community, that felt a little behind closed doors. So, my ask from the beginning is that we work more as a partner and we kind of opened this up to our whole community to ask, you know, what do you think about the Olathe Public Schools? I assure you, I mean, you saw some of the logos from back in 1965 and so on. We've never had this opportunity to open up to our public and say, you know, what do you guys think about what we're doing here? How do you think our identity, is it reflecting, you know, what you think our school district is? So, Mammoth came in, we discussed how this would go, and they were thrilled about being a partner on this campaign and for us being able to use the techniques that we have kind of with our other big projects that we have with the busing, these things where we open up to our community and really hear their voice. And the avenues we're using for that is, one, social media with the hashtag #OPSrebrand. If you use that hashtag and express your ideas, designs, shapes, colors, hopes and dreams, I will take them in and put them in with our other survey input, which is available on our website, olathepublicschools/rebrand, and our community input survey. So, this actually opened on, earlier this week, and we have about 400 responses so far and already some designs have been submitted that I'm super excited about. So, I'm going to walk through the process, the way this is going to go over this semester. So I'm going to walk through the process, the way this is going to go over this semester. Right now, we're in step one, which is gathering community input. And community in this aspect is really stakeholders. It's staff, students, everybody that is involved with our district, which is our whole community. Survey input, I already talked about. We are going to do focus groups as well, and we're working with Mammoth to put those together. Our social media campaign, also student outreach. I would love to hear from students on their ideas on, you know, drawings and their dreams of what our design could be. We have some very creative students. And not only do we have some classroom resources listed on the website for fun activities that teachers can use if they want to, or members of the public can download to use if they want to. We also talked to the guys at Mammoth to come and talk to our, some of our academies to kind of meet more on one, engage with them in a more direct way. They can provide input on what happens behind the scenes on their end as a learning opportunity, and we can get feedback from those creative kids. Lastly, committee outreach. We have several committees, committees in the district that are set up for gathering input, and we're hoping to present to all of them at some point. Next step is curating our contributions. So all of this input is going to come through the communications department, and we're going to try to collate as many themes and input as we can and then provide it to Mammoth along with the raw data. I mean, anything you submit to us, they will have access to be able to see and use in their process. Step three, Mammoth Creative Co. will do the design phase. This is where they do their magic, and luckily, it's not on me. And then step four is leadership review. So once Mammoth has preliminary designs, that will be reviewed by the Olathe Public Schools leadership team and the Board of Education. And that step is really to not only ensure that we have something that looks good and fits our goals, but also feels right and stays true to who we are. And I feel real good about that process. And lastly is the big reveal. Right now, we are aiming for the end of the school year for this project. And also, the input window we're looking at right now is the month of February to provide designs and input. But we can be flexible with that based on engagement, give everybody time to get their ideas. So I've talked a little bit about Mammoth Creative Co., and they've been nice enough to come tonight. I have Ronnie and Jake and Coach Littrell back there, who's also with Mammoth. And I'll give him the floor to introduce himself.
Thank you.
Excellent. Sweet. Awesome. I'm Ronnie Murphy and Vice President of Client Strategy for Mammoth Creative Co. So Mammoth Creative Co. is a subset of Mammoth Sports Construction. So sister companies, we work very, very closely together. Jake Hewitt with us is our research lead for this project, so he's helping us dissect all of the data that we're collecting. No point in introducing, I think everybody's familiar with Mark Littrell. So he's here for the, he's the project director for the sports side of the house. And then, as Becky mentioned, Micah Smith is a graduate of Olathe Public Schools, and he is the design lead for this project. So we're really excited to have individuals who are heavily invested in the support of this, of this project. And we're very much in the research and learning phase. So as Tony mentioned, there's steps to this process. And right now, we're just learning everything that we can from the community and taking in any information and any observations that we can, that we can get. Because the branding process, it is magical, but for me, it's more scientific. It is very much about dissecting the data and the hard truths, and then applying to them to the goals and objectives that we've set forth. So we want to take a very subjective material. Color and shape and visual images and words are all very individual and personalized and subjective to people. We want to turn all of those subjective truths for individuals into a very objective tool that the district can use to represent itself with consistency and equity, and so that everybody can start to recognize those individual elements as the total brand that represents the district. So we have a philosophy that I think is important for you guys to understand, and it'll, it'll reveal some of the steps that we're taking. I think it'll help you understand it. So we have this, we are, we are a heart and advertising agency, but we understand the truth that people hate advertising. And I might amend that sentence because with the exception of the Super Bowl next weekend, people generally hate advertising and being marketed to because it's disruptive, and people's lives are busy, and people don't need another thing to say yes to. And so they are inherently putting up a wall against advertising or in promotion or anything that feels like advertising. So for us, what we do know about all audiences is people love to be entertained. That's why we love sports. That's why we go to the movies. That's why we get on social media. We want to be entertained. We want to disconnect. We want to ingest something that brings us joy. So for us, the job is finding that sweet spot. What is the truths about a district or about an organization that we want people to understand? And how do we present it in a way that is edifying and entertaining to them? So they don't see it as advertising or promotion. They see it as integrated into their life. And the truth in, to do that starts with what we're doing now. It's understanding the real truth and every opinion and every perspective and every audience that this brand will ever have to speak to. And so we have to collect all of that, and we have to adjust all of that, and we have to view this brand through every one of those lenses so that we can create those tool sets that make this real and authentic and appealing to the wide variety of individuals that you have to speak to on a daily basis. And so ultimately, what we, we call that is a reason to believe. You know, everybody inherently wants to mistrust something, but we have to give people a reason to believe in the organization and in the brand. And that's what we're going to reveal throughout our research process and throughout the branding process. So we are in the research phase right now. The next time we're in front of you, we'll be showing you our process document, and we'll be unpacking the truths and the things that we found in that research and starting to formulate some of our inclinations. We'll start to show you some of the through lines through all of the responses that we got, through all the visual iterations that have come through. We'll start to, we'll start to show and reveal to you what the community at large is saying over and over again, and those repeatable truths. And then with that document in place, we'll turn it over to Micah and his team, and he'll be able to translate all of that data and all of those objective truths into a really visual, beautiful tool for you. So and as Becky kind of alluded to, when we create a brand, it's got to be a lot more than the logo that hangs on the wall. It's going to be more than the color palette. We want to create an entire system and family that really encompasses everything that you do and iterates throughout the year. Because school district, Olathe this year will look drastically different next year. And we know that's, that's true, and that's good. We want progress, and we want a brand that's going to grow and iterate with you and always hold those universal truths for you. So.
All right. I got a couple more, a couple more. First of all, ways, ways to get involved. I mentioned social media and our survey, and you can find our survey at our website, And if I click, let's see, oh, I didn't mean to sing on mic. Anyway, so we have Olathe, we have the website here, which shows our video, of course, message from Dr. Jaeger, along with the survey, which I encourage everyone, if you're interested, I want to know your input. Also, I've listed some classroom resources. We designed some activities that kind of are appropriate for each level, and you can just get a quick view here of something fun that I really am looking forward to input that we'll get from students or kids, any ages that want to do it outside the classroom. Very excited about that. Also, a rundown of some details, and my other favorite part, the community gallery, which you can see we've already gotten some submissions and some ideas that have been submitted by students and staff, and I think apparent. So again, I'm excited to watch this grow. This has only been up since this week, so I'm just really loving all of the interaction input that we're getting from our community. Lastly, we have timeline. Right now, I didn't update the check for Dr. Jaeger's video, but that's up, and it's wonderful. And so we'll keep going on the research phase, and then, once we have more to share, we will have that for you. And again, like I mentioned, we're looking at a launch, a reveal at the end of May. And now, stand for any questions.
Or any questions? I do have a couple. Becky, I'm glad you started with the why, because after the email went out earlier this week, I did receive some feedback as to why now. So I'm glad you answered those questions. How much will this project cost the district?
Yeah. So the investment that we're making for this project is $18,600. And I say the word investment because that's truly how we're looking at it. You know, our hope is that we come up with a brand that is going to serve us for years and years and years to come, that is truly reflective of who we are as a district. And to add just a little perspective, you know, we went out to several different companies to hear, you know, their price and what they would offer for us. And when you look at an organization of our size, oftentimes, the price that you get quoted is more like $100,000 and up. And so for us, Mammoth being able to accommodate our budget and really understand us as Olathe and as a school district, that was a really big selling point. I also want to clarify too, you know, I think a lot of times when people hear rebranding campaign, the dollar signs go up because you see there's Olathe here, there's Olathe when you walked in the front door, there's Olathe on the outside of our building. And so there's so many places where that replacement needs to happen. But for us, we're really going to be intentional about rolling out that new brand over time. And so as things reach end of life, that's when we're going to refresh it with the new look. And so we're not going to just rebrand everything in one fell swoop and have this really large ticket that we're having to pay. I would also say too that in an increasingly digital world, we're really lucky that in a blink of an eye, we can change the branding on our website. We can, you know, change those digital assets on our Facebook page and on our Twitter page. And so there's going to be some immediacy in the digital arena, but then obviously, we're going to be cautious and prudent as we go through those printed materials to make sure that we're being physically responsible.
I think a great example, I think a great example is this Olathe logo is not the current Olathe logo.
Yep.
That's not the same logo as the one in the Hulka.
Yep.
So that's an example.
The slow rollout.
My, my second question is, at the end of this project, will the district own the finished product?
Yes.
Okay. And then, this might be a question for Dr. Jaeger. I know we have all these different buckets of money, so this $18,600 that Becky just spoke of, where is that coming from?
She had a baby shower and didn't spend all the money related to that. So she's so generously.
College fund for the kids, yeah.
Sorry, I don't know why that came out of my mouth. We are using gift and grant funds for this, so we have a line item for money that's either donated to the district, given to the district, that kind of thing that we can't use for some of those other areas, and that's how we're paying for it.
I don't have any, oh, Mrs. Steele.
Just briefly, I see that the logo will be finalized in May. Do you see that rollout coming with graduation? Or is it intentional that it would be in August at the beginning of a school year? I mean, we think of graduation as an end, but it's also a beginning. But are you thinking August so that we kick off a new school year?
I think that was our, our initial thought. You know, obviously, like Tony said, we'll be flexible based on how much input we get, and that can, that can certainly change our timeline. But our hope was kind of a clean start in August to launch a new school year with the refresh.
Okay. Great.
Board, any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our last presentation of the evening. We'd like to welcome Mr. Pelangi. Board, we do have another agenda item coming up related to this, so we'll save questions for the 7.07 agenda item.
Sure.
I get to follow two great presentations this evening, so thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you, the board, with an update tonight on the, our next proposed project for our bond issue that is on the agenda for this evening. So identified in our 2022 bond issue under growth and reinvestment in student experience was funding for a new operations service center, the repurpose of our Linenwood Business, our Linenwood Business Center that we currently have, and then current technical education upgrades. So we took that and were able to design it and look at our Linenwood Business Center as a central location for all those proposed projects into one. So tonight, I'm going to be going over our new operations service center and current technical education campus, which is currently located at the Linenwood Business Center. So just as a reminder, we had, we had four different strands for our 2022 bond issue, and this one will be under growth and reinvestment in student experience. And just as a reminder that we had a $298.3 million bond, and we passed it in, in March of 2022. With our partners from DLR Group, our architect of record on the project, and our construction manager, McCown Gordon, we have the Linenwood Business Center. So as a reminder for everybody, this is a campus that we purchased a few years ago. We have an existing building that's roughly about 138,000 square feet, so about the size of a middle school, if you want to put that in perspective. And then at the far northeast corner of that campus, we have a 10,000 square foot metal storage building that's there. It's a huge parking lot that's there because there used to be a couple call centers in the existing building, so that's why we have all the parking that's currently there now. And, and we used it for a time for some bus parkouts that we had and we needed throughout the district, so. And the project is located on North Rogers Road in East Spruce, which is just east of I-35 and north of Santa Fe, and in a good central location for the district, for our What I'm showing you here is the current design that we have. So the proposed plan is to have our current technical education center be housed out of the existing building that's currently there. And then we are proposing an addition that's going to go on there that will house our operations service center operations, and then also have the construction trades program from CT in that building, just because of the higher volume space that they need to be able to, to build small homes, or if they need to bring in HVAC units to learn from. And then also, we see some great synergies with their program and our staff as a service center as well, because we also have electrical and plumbing and HVAC and carpentry that we have in our service center. And so be able to work with the students and have them job shadow us, and we're starting that process now. We have a student that's currently job shadowing us at the service center and getting a wide breadth of all the experience in different trades that we have at the service. Just a brief overall plan, and I'll break this down here in just a second, of all the programs that are going to go into this multi-use campus and facility. At the very bottom, where you see the little circle plaza area, that'll be the main entrance to the building, which is close to where the existing main entrance for the Linenwood building is now, so we're taking advantage of that. So as you go in, we'll have it set up similar to all of our campuses that you go to with a secure entry, where you go into a vestibule, you have to use the intercom to get in, and then you can venture, if approved, into the office area and then get checked in. And I'm going to do kind of a clockwise summary of this, this first plan of the existing building. What you have seen circled here is a multi-use space commons slash restaurant area. And we are scheduled to bring over the culinary program from Olathe North to this facility. And that area will be able to support their restaurant needs for what they have at night, but then also the function of the whole entire building. So it's a multi-use space. We can break it down into smaller areas, or we can open it up for, for large events if we need it for professional development, for example. We could use that space for it. I will note that part of the culinary and restaurant application for it, we have designed a coffee shop in this area. And just to the bottom of that circle, we have an outdoor plaza area where people can come in, get into this coffee shop, get their coffee, and come back out. But we've designed it in a way that it'll be sectioned off from the rest of the building for security purposes. But when needed, we can slide those glass partitions open, and it'll be open to the rest of the building. And that could be ran by the, the student programs that are in that building. And I'll mention some of those as I go around. And I'll mention some of those as I go around the campus. The next circle is culinary, again, bringing that over from, from Olatha North. And every program in the CTE that we're discussing tonight will be able to pretty much double their, their current needs. So, right now, we're going to be able to grow their classroom space, their labs, their restaurant lab, their pastry lab, and provide them with the, the storage that they need and up-to-date equipment as well. The, the equipment that's currently used at Olatha North is, is about two thousand nine. And after we did the audits of the equipment there, we showed that they needed to get reworked. So, this, this project will allow us to get them completely new, new equipment. Next is our health science suite, and this will include expanded needs for their EMS program, their pharmacy program, health skills, their simulation lab in phlebotomy. And, and right now, they're currently operating out of five SIM labs, and this will grow them to ten as well. And then, in addition, grow all the other programs as, as mentioned previously. Next is the animal science lab. They're currently housed out of our OATC building on the campus of Olatha North, out of an old computer lab, so this will quadruple their size right now, which includes their animal science lab, their, their grooming lab, where people hopefully will be able to bring their small animals to this location and get groomed and have the students be able to, to work on, on the animals. And then, we've also designed it in a way where we have a small little turfed outdoor area for, for the animals as well. Again, student-run and being able to work with the other programs in that area. For example, our access focus programs will be at this location that I'll mention in just a little bit, and they could possibly help out with, with this CTE program. At the, the top right-hand corner is our mental health suite that was currently being ran out of this building, and we've relocated them while we do interior demolition applications right now. And then, the goal is to bring them back. And so, they'll be at this location. The existing building had a separate entrance there on that side of the building where we can allow people that need the services to not actually come through the main entrance, but go through a separate entrance, and we'll set it up similar like we do at all of our other facilities as well. And finally, and shown in red is our access and focus program. That's our eighteen-to-twenty-one special ed program. Again, they were in this building, and we relocated them out, and our plan is to bring them back in and expand their offerings and give them additional classroom space that they need along with designing them a mock grocery lab as well. So, job, job skill training is, is what we perceive of that. And then, again, the, the students in this program could help with other various parts in this building, whether it's the coffee shop or it's the animal science area. And we see a lot of synergies that are going to happen with their, their programs at this building. This is the garden level or the lower level of the facility, where currently circled is the electronics program. So, that's our program at our West Dennis location that we partnered with Garmin with. So, we'll be bringing them over as well, and they'll be able to expand their electronics lab space and, and get additional areas for more students in the, in the space and, and storage. Okay. In circle is a conference center. With it being on the, the garden levels, we're calling it, we're going to be able to get a lot of openings in the existing floor slab from above so that we have two-story volume space and to be able to get natural daylight into this area. We could always use more conference space in the district for professional development, so this will afford us to have that there and to be able to bring people to this facility. So, we're offering the conference center here, and it can be broken up either into one large space, three spaces, two spaces, just affording that flexibility. And with some of the renderings that you'll see here in, in the slides coming up, all of these are open to each other, so you can see what the electronics students are doing while you're in this, this conference center. So, again, looking to be able to engage with the students and be able to see what they're doing and have other students see what other students are doing in those programs as well. And finally, this is our graphics department that's currently at the West Dennis campus. We're going to bring them over as well and expand their needs. This has a separate entrance down below and a separate dock area as well, so we can have their services be isolated from, from the rest of the building as well, and, but then still, for them the opportunity to grow and expand. The areas in gray that are in this level, those are future expansion areas. So, we can grow future CTE programs in this area. There's been a multitude of different programs that I think has been discussed with a CCT group that, a committee that's been put together, and these spaces can afford that, whether it's advanced manufacturing or dentistry, cosmetology, esports. We've, we've got spaces that can do that, or maybe a program we haven't even thought of yet. So, we have roughly about forty thousand square feet that we can grow into on this level and from some spaces above. This is the building addition. So, the area in red is our construction trades program. And again, allowing them to grow and double in size from where they're currently at at our West Dennis location. They're in a, they're in a current loc, spot that, that's not conducive to, to what they need and, and kind of smaller volume space. This will allow them to have almost a two-story, two-story high space. It'll expand their construction labs, their tool storage, give them an outdoor construction yard as well to be able to hold materials and work on maybe even taller projects as well, if it allows just that higher volume space needs. And then, also discussing with them, do they expand into more electrical programs or HVAC? This will give them the opportunity to, to do that and, and also bring in more students. And then, again, working with our programs or our trades departments, being able to shadow us. And then, if we have some small projects that we need to do as well, we would go into their space and work with them on that, if, if we can. So, those are some of the things we're getting into discussions with, with that program. At the bottom is just the support services for our trades. So, we have HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and the, the base spaces that they need, our support spaces, our automotive bays as well, because we support the, the one-hundred district vehicles that are here. So, we need a space to have them in and be able to grow a little bit as they're well. We have our warehouse storage space. The current plan is to keep our warehouse storage space that we have at our service center location on the west side of town. This will allow us to, to grow for those needs, because we have a lot of warehouse space that, that we could use if we have. So, this will allow us to have the, the immediate need storage area, but then still allow for some longer-term storage at our current facility that we're at the service center. And then, the last area is just our administration offices and, and space for the service center. We will have a separate entrance as well on this campus, so when you go to that circle plaza area, you could go either to the CTE side or you can come to the service center. Now for the pretty pictures. The, you have the before shot in its current state at the very top, and then, the, the current renderings that provided by our architects at DLR Group showing the, the main entrance plaza as you walk up to the CTE portion of it and the exterior veranda area, providing some, some shade that's there for people that want to come up and get their coffee in, in the coffee space, or if they're there that night for a culinary dinner, they'll afford the, the culinary group could, could have some outside events as well. Just an overall view of the entire campus. The design of the campus is for everything to look like one, one building. It's not going to look like we have an existing building and then we have an addition. We want it to all match together aesthetically and the design that's currently proposed. Just another shot of the current plaza area. You can see the, the link that's going to connect the existing building from the addition. We have some grading that, so there's a ramp in that glass walkway area to get us down to the lower level where the operations service center will be. And then, we'll have some other transitions within our addition, just taking advantage of the topography that's there and not having to build everything up. This is the west elevation that you see from I-35, so again, the, the brick and the, the brown ephes that's currently up right now, and going back on there with, with some metal, metal panels and fiber reinforced panels to bring that consistency across four elevations of, of an existing building. It's the main entrance of the facility. As soon as you come out of the, the office area, after you check in, again, these, these larger corridors to be able to see from one side of the building to the other to provide natural daylight throughout the existing building. We're opening up to the existing structure as well, so trying to grow that volume height. And then, you'll start to see as we walk around, a lot of glass openings, so students can see what other students are doing. And, because we did some of our tours at some of the neighboring districts and, and even in the region, and they, they talked about how other students were seeing what other students were doing, and maybe someone was in one program, and then the next year, they realized that they may want to be in another program. So, for them to conversate together and be in the same building, be able to see what other programs are doing was really vital to, to what they did and one of the lessons, takeaways that we took for our project. This is the, the commons area that can double up as a, as a restaurant or professional development area, sectioning off these areas, whether we've got these wood sliders that go around or kind of mesh screens that, that can get pulled. And then, we're currently in discussions about how we work our technology in that space as well to help just build the flexibility that we need in that space for whatever we want to do. Again, just kind of a more informal setup. This is not the, the final furniture. It's in there. It's just a placeholder for, for the renderings. And this is the conference center. That's on the lower level, so you can see we've taken out the, the floor slab from above, so you can see the, the higher volume space that we have in there, being able to bring natural daylight with some skylights that we're proposing as well. And then, in the, the background, you can see the, the electronics lab. So, again, getting that visual of what the, the students are doing and, and the visitors that come to the building. We want them to see what the students are doing. Again, just another shot of the, the corridors here between the conference center and the electronics lab on, on the lower level. And then, this is over in the health science suite, just a view of the phlebotomy lab, building these small group learning areas. So, if students want to come out in small groups of two, four, six, we're, we're providing them those areas to, to go sit and collaborate and be able to, to work with each other in, in a, in an environment that's, that's conducive to maybe what they would see out, out in the real world as well. So, again, what was approved a couple of months ago was the interior demolition and the abatement of the Linenwood Center. So, this is just showing the views of the south half of the project. That it's in their, their current state. So, as you can see, we're, we're starting to get down to structure here and be able to verify some things that maybe we couldn't see when we had walls up. There hasn't been anything that's, has been alarming yet to us, which is good. But again, you can see from, from one end to the other and see the current structure that it's in and getting everything cleaned up and just kind of giving us that clean slate that we need for hopefully the, the next phase. Just want to put a reminder out to everybody that we, we do the monthly bond updates for, for the board, so those get put up on our website. And in addition to the reports that I, I provide to you every month just to let the public know, they want to keep up on any of the projects that we're doing with the bond issue, that we put those out there. And with that, I'd like to thank...
Travis, thank you and your team for all the work that you guys are doing, and I know it's a, it's a huge undertaking, and you do it with grace and class, so thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Just, just briefly, I may add also, you know, one of the things that's not so easy to notice on, on the slide, certainly all the work and effort that's gone into it, but, you know, three years ago, when staff and the board worked together to purchase the building on Rogers Road, it was really a vision for what that site could be. And I just heard Travis, I think it was yesterday, say that our total cost and investment in this project overall is about seventy percent of what it would be had we just constructed an entire new facility and what have you. So, that's the kind of foresight and planning that this board has done for a long time and our staff as well. So, I thought it was worth noting that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to public comments, 5.01.
I have a couple of questions.
We want to do questions, 7.07, but you can make a comment.
No, that's okay. You said that. That's fine.
Mrs. Steele has a comment?
Yeah, just comments, no questions. So, Mr. Pelangi, I just wanted to say I had the privilege of sitting on that CTE committee. I'll yield to Dr. Yurkovich later to kind of speak to that. She was able to participate in a lot more of that than I was. This building is going to be hallmark. I am so excited. I did tour some of the local programs, and I am so excited for the vision that you have with this. And when I hear you talk about students collaborating, I also know from visiting with some of the educators in those spaces that when you put educators together who feel a real calling to the CTE student, they are also collaborating, and that only elevates the education for all. So, I think this building is going to be such a hallmark for us and such a boost. The other thing I heard you say was growing and doubling and leaving space for future programming. We know that we have some of our programs that really do need to accept more students, and, and we could if we had the space to, and so, that, that is also super exciting. I love the idea that we're repurposing, as Dr. Jaeger referenced, in an age when bulldozing and rebuilding is what we do. This is responsible, so thank you for your vision on that. I had the privilege, or not, many moons ago of doing a lot of PD in the garden level of that building. It was drab and boring, and it kind of just kind of, I, I want to go back and do PT in the garden, or PD in the garden level there. So, anyway, that, that is very cool. And lastly, when I hear what you're saying about the access and focus programs, having a graduate from one of those programs, it is so exciting, the opportunities they will have simply because of the programs that are going to be in the CTE building. And the idea of this all starting in 2025, you have my commitment that that, I want to see that date happen. It is, it is going to be life-changing for our focus and access students. It's one thing I love about Olatha, we see all students. And I'm, I'm so thankful that those programs will be housed here. And lastly, I will, I don't think there's ever enough coffee shops in the world, so I will, I will be the first customer, so thank you.
Board, any other comments? Mrs. Steele, is garden level AKA for basement? Does basement cause trauma?
I noticed, I noticed when Travis said garden level, Luke Dietz, who you'll meet later from our construction management firm, is back there. He was chuckling at your description of garden level, so I thought that was good.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to 5.01, Mrs. Steele.
At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, reserves limited time for individuals to address the board. We ask that your comments be germane, that is, related to the business that this board effectuates. Non-compliance may result in the president interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the board and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city and state, and relationship to the district.
All right. Our first speaker tonight is Patty Lander.
Hello, I'm Patty. I have three kids through, through Olatha School District, sorry about that. My topic today is logic and discernment. Don't listen to what they say, watch what they do. What is the role of the school board? From Olatha, recognize that I should endeavor to make policy decisions only after full discussion at publicly-held board meetings, render all decisions based on the valuable facts in my independent judgment, and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups. It does not say to approve every illogical item that comes up for vote. Regarding logic, pushing forward while ignoring root cause issues and slapping shiny labels on top help nothing. A rebrand will have extensive costs and take time from student learning, since it appears class time will be taken for this and absolutely seems like an unnecessary distraction at best, time taken away from fixing the low math and reading competency scores. In the presentation, we heard lots of buzzwords, equity, lens, et cetera. I'm interested in who... I'm interested in who is funding the grant and why? What do they get out of it and what strings are attached? Costs to change signage and fleet alone will be extensive. This is taxpayer money, less the small $18,000. It seems that there is a different goal here, perhaps a student-sourced design for the SDGs as Shawnee Mission did? It does not appear that the new logo helped them at all. If by losing traction with neighboring districts you mean tied to enrollment, both Shawnee Mission and Blue Valley have remained flat as well, even as the populations have increased dramatically. If you must, use one of the already submitted concepts and call it good. The apple with the blue lines looked great. With a rotten piece of fruit, it would be like transforming the rot by slapping chemicals like glyphosate on it and making kids eat it anyway, even if those chemicals negatively affect mental health and hormones. Using assigned and choice reading materials to instill trauma in every child is much the same, listed in Board Ducks in January. Transforming and causing a marked decline in overall public mental health since they were introduced. It was at least prior to 2018 in Olathe, it could have been earlier. We are told the girl or boy that was raped and bleeds across the floor as in The Kite Runner needs to see themselves in the books that they read. Does it help that the child relive that experience in the classroom outside of a clinical setting? Growing the trauma by helping others share in it only brings more trauma and increases the need for mental health services, which leads to more money needed with kids as collateral damage. Will children be considered transitioned to the new socially engineered structure of transformational social emotional learning? What is considered success? Following UNESCO, the UN Educational Arm, it is when there is no dissonance from children, meaning they don't ask any questions of the narrative of the day. That means believing everything you are told, even when it defies logic and reason. Why wouldn't we want children to ask questions? What happens to innovation or creativity? How will they know when the science does not follow the scientific method? When they're given agendas such as the SDGs is based on a false premise, it is not sustainable for all, only for the elitists. New board members, I implore you to start reading items such as Common Core Diva, not propaganda from the educational partners.
Ms. Lanter, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Megan Bricks.
My name is Megan Bricks. I reside in DeSoto, Kansas, and I'm an educator here in this school district. I want to thank you for allowing me time to speak with you all tonight. Today begins the start of a new month, which means that we are one month closer to the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year. As educators, we frequently think ahead and think about what is coming so that we can be best prepared and ready to take on any challenge. The same goes for the changes already proposed for the 24-25 school year. We are already thinking forward about what that will look like for each of our families and how we will have to adapt our current schedules and routines to match the change to a three-tiered busing system, which I know we desperately need. Tonight, I want to talk through some considerations that our students could benefit from. One, we should ensure that all levels of librarians have library aides. A big focus across our district is improving our students' reading skills. One of the most important people in a building who can directly impact students' reading is a librarian, who can help a child find a book that is just right for them and help them find books and genres that they are interested in. But these librarians can assist students when they are tasked to complete the jobs of a librarian and both a library clerk. If we truly want our students prepared for their future, it must start with our libraries with a clerk at each level. Two, we should ensure that there is a kindergarten aide within each elementary building. We could make an enormous impact on our students during their kindergarten year if we reinstated kindergarten aides to provide another set of hands and eyes to meet students where they are at and meet the needs of all learners within small groups and interventions. If we want our students prepared for their future, it all begins during year one in kindergarten. We must set them up for success with a solid base of knowledge. Three, we should ensure that there is time within the school day for students to participate in all fine arts activities, especially at the elementary level, including band strings and special choruses. It is important that students from a young age have opportunities to explore the fine arts in their creativity. As you all know, I'm extremely passionate and will advocate for what I believe is best for students. I will never stand up here and say that I have all the answers or even one answer, but I will stand up here and present ideas of things that our students could greatly benefit from. I hope that in all of your conversations and thoughts leading up to the 2024-2025 school year, that you put students first and then educators and staff members second, who then support those children. Thank you again for allowing me to speak and welcome to our new board member.
Thank you. Nick Crowley.
Hello, my name is Nick Crowley. I reside in Overland Park, Kansas. I'm a teacher at Mill Creek Campus in the Hope Program, where I am lucky enough to work with students who have been suspended long-term from the Olathe middle and high schools. There's nowhere else like it in the city. I would invite any member of the board or district leadership to come talk to my students who have a unique perspective. I'm here tonight first to thank Dr. Jaeger for his recent advocacy in Topeka. It's hard to speak to those in power, but what is right at times is something, it's right and at times was something we must all do. I was not planning to speak tonight, but waking up on Tuesday without a paycheck in my account, combined with last month's presentation on recruitment and retention, made me feel like I shouldn't. You see, Dr. Church released his survey on teacher retention and I attended one of his sessions in my capacity as an ONEA member and I began working with three additional Olathe educators on digging into our district data regarding teacher engagement. It's my understanding that Dr. Jaeger has already made plans to start working towards the new rotation of data that's coming out this year, so that's really exciting to hear. I really think that our district values the recruitment of new teachers very highly, very highly. But in my experience working with other teachers, it's led me to believe that keeping that talent amidst a nationwide teacher shortage is not the priority that it should be. The email that we received before the school day on Tuesday letting us know that the error in certified staff pay was alarming and upsetting, but I was happy to see later emails come with apologies and more importantly, actions that showed responsibility by higher levels of district leadership. I hope this attitude continues because a missed pay period following the adoption of a new human resources platform during the middle of an academic year marked by record-high student absenteeism across the country are three of the thousand cuts that teachers are dying by. My worldview is one that demands responsibility be proportionate with power, and I take that responsibility to my students very seriously every single day. It's why I constantly reflect on how I'm making their experience easier and holding myself accountable for the classroom environment. It is why I lead with apology. I want to encourage a similar attitude to those listening. Do you have power over the employees in this school system? How are you holding yourself accountable for improving their professional lives? Your power demands that of you. When making decisions, are you asking yourself first what will be best for students and then second, what will be best for the adults that you employ to serve those students? If not, why not? Our teaching conditions are their learning conditions. Please remember that. Solidarity forever, have a good night.
Our next speaker is Stephen Coons.
My name's Steve Coons. I'm a longtime patron of the district, a parent of two district graduates, as well as two grandkids presently in elementary. Up until three months ago, I was in my seventh year driving a general education big school bus, supporting one of the district's longer double routes that averaged two hours, 20 minutes each morning and afternoon. Being retired, I chose to drive for my district, not because I needed a job, because I enjoy driving and the daily structure the school bus job provides. Regarding the current school bus driver shortage, I'd like to share a couple insights and suggestions from the viewpoint seldom if ever mentioned, those of the frontline, behind-the-wheel school bus driver. First item is our big bus equipment. When DS took over the contract, our fleet consisted of brand-new buses, which was good and bad. Good for operational reliability, but bad is not one yellow bus had air conditioning, which a majority of the first student fleet had contained, even though not required by contract. Yes, requiring air conditioning on the big buses will have an additional cost, but additional air conditioning will definitely attract and help retain drivers, especially older drivers, being provided the same level of comfort as the classrooms and administrative offices. Second, the district recently began adherence to route guidelines being implemented and enforced as hard and fast rules with no exceptions. In past years, at the beginning of the school year, driver input would be used to refine the routes to ensure that what was computer-generated was actually encountered and operable. Safety for both driving the route as well as student pickup and drop-off locations were the focus. Once route updates were completed, they would be set for the remaining of the school year. This year, I was informed by DS that the district would not approve any requested updates because of guideline changes. My request at updates would improve student safety on my route and make it more efficient based on logical concentrations of the students and not on arbitrary mileage distance or street-type designation on my route as previous. An example, I had a student that would walk almost a half mile to his new stop, only to be driven back past his residence and past the previous year's stop location. Certainly comes to mind, given that no one really wanted to hear the details of why I was wanting these requests. It was very disappointing as a driver who sees what's going on in the neighborhood. In six years' experience, by the way. This request to shift parts of my route onto secondary streets had been, in the prior six years, was to reduce my bus's impact on neighborhood traffic and making it safer during pickup and drop-off times. From the driver's view, when changes are requested, do not add any more time than getting stopped at a stoplight, why not make them, especially if it makes the route safer? The unwillingness to consider requested updates and then use guidelines. Oops, I'm not done. Can I have another minute? I just almost-
I'm sorry, your time has expired, sir.
Aw, come on, I voted for you too. But tradition buses and collaborating with drivers would be a good thing to bring in to help retain drivers.
Thank you. Thank you. Stephen Rose.
Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed faculty, back there, WG. Today, I stand before you with immense pride and gratitude as I have the honor to recognize somebody who embodies leadership, dedication, and passion, our principal, Natalie Dewise. In the realm of education, Natalie is not just a leader, she is a true rock star. Mrs. Dewise has tirelessly steered our school towards excellence, fostering an environment where both kids and teachers thrive. With unwavering commitment, they have transformed challenges into opportunities, always putting the well-being and growth of our school community at the forefront. This rock star principal not only sets high standards for academic achievement, but also creates a nurturing atmosphere that encourages creativity and innovation. Mrs. Dewise is not just about numbers and statistics. She genuinely cares about each student, understanding that education is not just about imparting knowledge, but also about shaping character. What sets Natalie apart is her ability to inspire and motivate, whether it's an encouraging voice over the loudspeaker, getting duct tape to a wall, or my personal favorite, going all out at dressing up as Taylor Swift and winning a lip sync battle. Which I was robbed, by the way. Natalie's leadership style is one of empathy and encouragement. She instills in us a belief that we can overcome any obstacle that gets in the way of a student and create new lanes for our students to go down where every student is able to learn. Let's not forget the countless hours she has put in behind the scenes, working tirelessly to ensure that our school is not just a place of learning, but a community that feels like home. Her dedication to fostering a positive school culture is the heartbeat of our educational institution. Mrs. Dewise leads by example, demonstrating the values that instill in us every day. Her unwavering commitment to excellence has not only elevated our school's academic standing, but has also created a legacy of respect, responsibility, being kind, and peaceful. In conclusion, today is not just about acknowledging Mrs. Dewise as a leader, it's about celebrating a rock star who has transformed our school into a stage where dreams can be achieved and futures are shaped. Thank you, Mrs. Dewise, for being the driving force behind our collective success. I hope one day that I can become half as good of a principal as you are, and I speak on behalf of everybody at Walnut Grove, that your mother is staring down from heaven with tears in her eyes and how proud she is of you and amazing of what you become. Thank you, Board, for giving me this opportunity to recognize this amazing human.
And that concludes our public comments for this evening. Moving on to action consent, 6.01 through 6.06. Board, any questions on those items? If not, I'll seek a motion.
Move to approve 6.01 to 6.06 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Right, action bids, contracts, and agreements. Board, are there any agenda items besides 7.07 that you all have questions about? Okay, seeing none, if it's all right with you all, I would like to just answer 7.07 and then we can take all of them together once 7.07 is answered, or we can pull it, however you guys want to work it. So, Mr. Palangi, I think you're up for 7.07.
Good evening again.
And board members, any questions? Mrs. Reagan?
Hi, Travis.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you for standing again.
No problem.
As I understand it, state statute stipulates that expenditures over $20,000 for construction, reconstruction, remodeling, or the purchase of various things must go to the lowest responsible bidder. Lowest is easy to determine, but I am curious how it is determined that a bid is responsible.
Okay, well, thank you for the question. So I've got some notes prepared, so I may look down and read some of those notes.
You go for it.
So after we've completed with the bid and we're evaluating if they're the lowest responsible bidder or not, we have a variety and a long list of things that we evaluate. So, for example, the first thing is make sure they have a completed bid form. We want to make sure that they've filled out everything that we pass. Second is on larger projects, we have them submit a bid bond, which is a certain percentage of their bid that is in a check so that we know that when they're bidding, that they make sure that they're adhering to the costs and then they want to submit on this project. So that's something that we require. Third is just acknowledging our bid addendums. So during a larger project or any project, once we have a bid, we get questions that come in and we want to make sure we address those and make sure those get into the bid documents. So we'll issue addendums that come out during that bid period and then as part of the bid form, the contractors acknowledge that. So we want to make sure they got everything covered in their bid. Next, after the bids come in, we have post-bid interviews with the potential contractors. So we interview the apparent lows, low contractors, and then we also interview the number two as well, just to make sure that all scope of work were in their bids. And that includes the drawings, the specifications, the bidding addendums, to make sure that they haven't missed anything. Next is reference checks, so we make sure we get their references and we follow up on their reference checks to make sure that they're in good standing, their previous work record. So we go back and make sure that they're in good standing with previous work that's similar to ours or other K-12 clients, or even in good standing with current projects that they have now with us, for example. We do a lot of work and work with a lot of contractors, so if they really haven't performed well in the past, we can have that conversation with them or we will not recommend them as well. We want to make sure they're in good financial standing for completion of the project. So we do reach out to their bonding companies to make sure that they're not in default on any of the other projects, because we want to make sure that they can perform throughout the duration of our projects. We do checks on many potential subcontractors that they're going to be working with on the project to make sure, and their suppliers, just to make sure that they're in good standing as well. So typically, for some of our projects, we'll have a contractor that'll be on there that they'll self-perform, but then they may have another subcontractor under them that'll come in and do work for them. We want to make sure they're in good standing as well. And then we also do a record on their safety checks and the safety of their company and also with an evaluation for their safety practices.
Thank you so much. It sounds like you do a lot of homework during the process. I also am curious, just, and this is hypothetical, Lee speaking, if we were to pull this item and- and table it, as far as the bid sheet is considered, what kind of impact is that going to have on the timeline that's been established to get this building done and ready for students?
So, as we mentioned, even with the future action item that was presented back in September and subsequent bids for, like, the abatement and interior demolition, we made note that we are anticipating August 25 opening. So, be able to meet that with our schedule today for what we're presenting with you. If we did delay, it would delay the project in no time.
And thank you for answering my questions. There is a lot to learn, as a board member sworn in less than a month ago, and so I appreciate you indulging my curiosity and providing very thorough information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Travis, real quick, on the bids that are in for this project, if it was tabled or delayed, what might happen with those bids? Do those bids stay and carry forward, or what does that look like?
No, they're only good for 30 days, so we would have to go rebid those out, and there's potential that we wouldn't get the coverage that we currently had with the first bids as well. And prices could go...
Board, any additional questions on 7.07?
No.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Sorry about that. Actually, my question is more on usage of the building. I know you referenced, when you were talking about the Innovation Center, the opportunity for PD and for the district to use for other activities. Will it be available to our community or to our business partners for use for events? The Conference Center, I'm thinking in particular, might be valuable for business partners to have access to.
Oh, of course. We want to get them in the buildings and interacting with their students as well. So, we would definitely put it under our facility usage umbrella and make sure that we have the appropriate measures in place to help rent that out on the evenings. If it's during the business day, we'd have to coordinate with the administrators at the building to make sure there isn't anything going on during the school day as well. But definitely can see this being a destination for a lot of businesses in Olathe that interact with students.
Okay, thank you.
Board, any other questions?
I just have a clarification on the earlier question that Mrs. Reagan had. So, because we have to do the lowest responsible bidder, so we can't consider things like their locality, their community involvement, any apprenticeship programs, anything like that as part of the decision-making process?
No, a lot of the companies that we do work with, like for our Building Trades, for example, a lot of those companies do bid on our projects. But again, we don't take that into account. We just look at the list of items that I showed you there, making sure that we're good stewards of our funds. And if we get the lowest bid on a project, they can meet everything that we have on the project, and we feel like we can do business.
Thank you.
Travis, what would happen in the event that it's the lowest bid, but they don't check two of those boxes?
Then we would not recommend them.
Okay. Then it would be, I guess, the next lowest bid?
Yeah, that's why we interview the number two as well, to make sure that they're in compliance with everything. And then, even sometimes, we'll go to number three. There have been times where a bid had come in and it's so substantially lower, but after we interview them, they realize they missed a big chunk of scope of work. So, we just want to make sure that we do our due diligence and not go to business with someone, then all of a sudden, they're coming back saying, hey, I missed all this stuff. I want to change. We don't want to...
I wonder, sorry, interrupting our question.
That just triggered another question that Mr. Babbitt asked about local businesses. Can you give us just kind of an estimate of what percentage of these contractors are local?
Local as like in Olathe or local as in the metro?
In the Kansas City region.
Oh, I would say almost every single one is.
Okay.
Mr. Babbitt, do you have another question?
Yeah, just, so, do change orders come in often to the, sometimes push lower bids over what another bid would have been?
No. So, no, they wouldn't. Because we, if we go to contract with someone, we feel like if they bring a change order, it would have been a change order for the number two or the number three as well, even after doing that evaluation. So, I don't feel like that a change order would push number two as being the little bidder.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I know you guys do your homework, and there's a lot of paperwork that goes into this, so we appreciate it.
I have one, just, so, what I'm just thinking out loud, you know, my experience contracting is like my homeownership. It's a lot different than, you know, I get three bids for a roof, and you get a really low one, and you're like, oy, why are you so low? But it sounds like there are different parameters that you make sure you go through, that the low bid isn't as eyebrow-raising that it would be for me as a homeowner, when I'm just looking through, and I don't have the robust checklist that you guys go through, that, you know, I mean, I'm revealing my homeownership knowledge while coming down. But that's my frame of reference, and I imagine the community's frame of reference.
Mrs. Reagan, it is really rare for us to come to number two. We do diligence on the low bidder, and that's why we have a competitive bidding nature in the state of Kansas. And so, we want to make sure that we do our checks and balances as a school district to make sure that we don't get in those situations when we're out there actually building.
I wonder, just because this is the largest item that's been in front of this current board, I wonder also, either Travis or Chris, one of you, well, you just talked to us, and you kind of just touched on it, Travis, but in terms of Kansas statute, what it is that our bidding can entail? So, we have a board policy, obviously, that we follow, you know. How much leniency does the board have in that actually versus Kansas statute and those kinds of things in terms of preferential types of businesses, or, you know, union, non-union, those kinds of things? Can you talk to us just a little bit about how that works?
No, I can't. Actually, Travis, I've already kind of answered that. There's a statute, KSA 72-1151, and it says, Miss Reagan had mentioned, and essentially, it is a Kansas law, in any contract that is going to require construction that exceeds $20,000 must go through a competitive bidding process. That's Kansas law. It's also reflected in our board policy, DJED. So, there's not a lot of, you know, leeway there for, you know, for a lot of good reasons. So, that's one thing. And actually, as Mr. Babbitt's question, Travis, as far as a local bidder in terms of preference, there is under Kansas law for materials, wares, or goods, a local bidder can come in and perhaps meet a bid for construction that's not allowed. But there is that allowance for, again, for materials, fares, and goods. So, I think, Brad, is that Dr. Yurkovich?
Board, any other questions?
I do. I mean, I might as well, you know, first time. So, I really like the process that you have to get a responsible bidder. Can you talk about the interviews that you do and how you ensure you have a fair panel with the bidders that you...
Yes, I'm going to bring up Luke Deeds with McCallan Gordon. So, they head that up as being the construction manager for us, and then they provide a report back. And there are times where I sit in on those interviews, but more specific to this project, I think Luke could probably give you a better summary of that.
Hi, good evening, Luke Deeds, Vice President, McCallan Gordon, and responsible for our project today. So, I'll just walk you through the process a little bit, but when we receive bids for any of the packages that are part of the motion tonight, we have a team of folks dedicated to the project. David Dykman, our project manager back there, is one of those folks. We'll divide up our packages to the right team members that have that expertise. And we have a very methodical checklist of scope evaluation that we... A lot of that is to make sure they have the right components, parts, and pieces that are identified in our bidding documents. We have a very prescriptive requirements for bidding so that the mechanical contractor includes ductwork and controls and all the technical things that come with the construction project. You can imagine it's a Lego set, if you will, of millions of pieces. So, we want to make sure we have all the pieces picked up and assigned in the right places. We'll go through that evaluation, document those conversations in a software program we use, so we have that as record going forward. That is how we evaluate compliance within those bidding documents. In addition to that, we go through a pre-qualification process with those trade contractors, or as Mr. Pelangi noted, we make sure we're, folks are in a good standing financially, bonding, safety, all the things that you want and expect for a school district, that you have strong partners that can actually complete the work in place. If we ever have concerns or issues related to that, then that's when we raise the flag and start having a conversation with our leadership internally, and then also with the school district to make sure we're documenting any concerns or frustrations or challenges that maybe seek out. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I was just kind of looking to, you know, get the comprehensive and not preferential treatment with the rest of the regulations checks. Thank you.
Board, any other questions?
I'm sorry to interrupt again. I might mention that Mr. Deeds also is an Olathe parent, has kids in the district, and his wife works in the district as well. And so, if for some reason this project wouldn't go well, there is no one...
I'm worried about you guys.
There is no one more nervous than him. So, and thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it, yeah.
Board, thank you. I appreciate the conversation. I do just want to note for the community, this is a large number. However, it's about $1.3, $1.2 million underestimated. So, again, this is the, you know, kudos to Travis and his team and the work that he, his team does and our partners, McCallan Gordon, so we appreciate it. Board, any other questions on 7.07? All right, Board, any questions on 7.01 through 7.09?
Move to approve 7.01 through 7.09.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to action under 8.01.
Move to approve 8.01 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Board, there's a number of future action items, a couple of information written reports. Board members, topics for discussion. Dr. Yurkovich?
I would like to thank Scarborough Community for presenting tonight. I had the opportunity to actually attend a school site council meeting with Scarborough and slash PTO meeting, and everything that was represented tonight, I saw in that meeting as well. The concern for their PTO to be able to provide events that every family in their community could attend, and to find ways to cover the cost so that they could. It was, and it was before the holidays, so it was really heartwarming to see that that evening. Thanks also to our communications department. Great presentation and exciting for the rebranding and to, or maybe we could even call it a full, comprehensive branding that's never occurred, really. So, exciting for that and to have input from the community, I think, is going to make that a lot of fun. And then, Mr. Pelangi, your presentation tonight and those who supported him with that, because there is a lot, obviously, going on in the district, exciting, but a lot of details for us to learn, even some of us who've been around for a long time. I do have just a comment or something that, a well wish, I guess, might be a better description. You know, we talked about Mr. McMullin having a birthday, or Dr. McMullin having a birthday tomorrow. Well, he shares that birthdate, not the same year, but with a person who many of us may know in Olathe, and that is Ruth Ann Hackler. And she actually will turn 100 years tomorrow. And so, on behalf of the Olathe Public Schools and the Board of Education, I just want to take a moment to send a birthday wish to Ruth Ann Hackler. Ms. Hackler will celebrate her 100th birthday tomorrow, and she has a number of connections to Olathe Public Schools. She and her husband first came to Olathe in 1949 in a Model A, as she describes. She was one of the early degreed teachers in Olathe, because at that time, teachers didn't have to have a degree, but she did. She taught business, bookkeeping, and shorthand at John P. St. John Memorial High School. In 1969, and those of us who just went through, all of us have done this, but who just went through a school board election, she ran for school board. And one topic that was at issue in the election was a curriculum for human growth and development that Olathe was teaching and was being piloted across the state, but there was some opposition to teaching sex ed. And thus, she was supportive of the curriculum, but thus, her opponents called her the sex candidate. Now, when she told this story, she did say, I was a lot younger then. Ms. Hackler actually served 22 and a half years on the Olathe Board of Education, beginning in 1969. And so, she was a member of this board when the growth was just crazy. And I came in '89, and I know what it was like then. So, she was obviously here long before that. She ended her term soon after she had been elected to serve in the Kansas Legislature, because there was pushback to be a board member and in the legislature. She also served as the president of the Kansas Association of School Boards. She sat on numerous boards in Olathe, participated as a senior-serving schools volunteer, and was on the foundation board for Johnson County Community College. In 2014, Ruth Ann Hackler was named to the Olathe Wall of Honor as a distinguished person of honor for her contributions to Olathe Public Schools. And you can see her name on the Board of Education plaque just outside the entrance to this room, and find more information on the Wall of Honor that's in the hallway or on the Olathe Public Schools website. We thank Ms. Hackler for her contributions to Olathe and Olathe Public Schools, and we wish her a very happy 100th birthday.
Board members, any other comments? Mrs. Reagan?
Dr. McMullin, did you come here on a Model A also? Just checking.
Mrs. Reagan?
Well, first off, I first learned about Ruth Ann Hackler when I was doing research on elections and why every vote matters. If I remember correctly, she won her House seat by, I think, four votes, perhaps? And so, every vote matters. And she was able, when she won that seat, it gave the majority to a different party in the State House by one seat. And so, those four votes made a huge difference, and that's a very important lesson in civics. And I think, Olathe, like, we've had some close elections. We had a city council race a few years back, that was three votes. But when I first learned about that, Ruth Ann Hackler, she's like an election rock star, in my opinion. So, thank you so much for sharing that. I had the privilege of attending my first Head Start Policy Council meeting, and I just am very impressed with that program. You know, we are at capacity, there is a waiting list. I was pleased to hear about, you know, the attention done to making sure kids are getting hearing screenings and vision screenings and the home visits when they're doing necessary, and the attention given to making sure that we have high attendance rates for that particular program, and making sure that when families are struggling to get their little ones here for Head Start, we look for solutions. And so, it was a neat meeting, and I'm looking forward to attending more of them. To the applicants who applied for the Board of Education seat, thank you for putting yourself out there. It's a testament to our community, just the caliber of people who were here last evening. And it's really awesome to see our new board members... And it's really awesome to see our new board member diving in headfirst. And staff, thanks for indulging the questions. Having new board members is probably just as fun for you as it is for us. And so I appreciate the patience and the knowledge you bring. I know we are on the cusp of some big changes in the next couple of school years, and just, you know, I personally have just a vision of making sure our district stays strong, and that at the heart of that is our kids, but our kids can't succeed without our staff. And so just thank you for all that you do. And finally, I just want to say how proud I am of one of our Olathe East students for going down to Topeka last week and giving testimony on a proposed House resolution to amend our constitution. Grace Springer spoke with courage and eloquence and a maturity that blew me away. You know, speaking to a body of legislators, when you are in high school, I can't imagine how intimidating that is. And I was so proud to hear her words. I will say, I was disappointed to hear the reaction from people in the legislature when she spoke of her experience at Olathe East, that tragic day we had, I think, two springs ago. You know, our job as elected officials is to listen, and it is to try to understand, and it is certainly not to undermine the lived experience of our most important constituency. So Grace, if you're watching, I'm so proud of you, and just all of our students who step up to come to public comments, to send board members emails, to reach out to people in Topeka. You are the future, and you inspire me. So thank you very much, and those are my comments.
Board, any other comments? Mrs. Johann?
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say thank you. First of all, what a wonderful group of people. I was welcomed with open arms today and got all the things to be ready for tonight, so I just feel like I stepped right in, fit right in really quickly. Very excited to be on this journey, to be along with this group, and making decisions and helping support our youth in our community. Looking forward to the next few years and see what we can do together. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Mrs. Steele?
I'm going to start first with, in January, this board appointed me to the KASB Board of Directors. That's Kansas Association of School Boards. So I just wanted to report back. We had a meeting in January, and KASB is a private organization that our district is members of. And so if anyone is so inclined to learn more about why we are members, I will tell you, they have 100% membership in the state of Kansas, so every single school district is a member of KASB. The reason why is their mission, being to help school boards with improving educational outcomes for students, advocate for student success, and they do that through leadership development, legal support, and advocacy services. They're a great resource to our school board. And in January, I had an onboarding meeting as well as our first board meeting. It was very much similar to the fire hose I felt two years ago when I started in this position. So I'm still learning, but it's not only a wonderful group of people, the board itself, being on that board with people from all over the state, learning from them, is going to be a great experience, and I plan to bring those ideas back to Olathe. I will echo Claire regarding last night. We had six amazing individuals, all of which would have been wonderful, capable people. We could only choose one, and I am so thankful we chose Becky collectively, and I'm welcome. We're glad to have you. I also had down Grace's name. I watched her testimony. I will tell you, I will, I would, I am always happy to write testimony. It's a whole nother thing to show up and give live testimony, because you're putting yourself in the position of being cross-examined. She was brave, she was well-spoken, and it made me so proud to be able to claim her. And lastly, to my friend Jimmy, happy birthday. I will tell you, we graduated together in Olathe North the same year. We're both Eagles, and so I'm the only one that knows how old he is. However, I will, you know, I will not tell you, because then you'll know how old I am. So it's secret. So happy birthday. Have a good day tomorrow. Thank you.
Board, any other comments? Mr. Babbitt?
Just a real quick one. I actually didn't have any prepared comments tonight till Scarborough came up here and gave their presentation. One of the things that inspired me to run for the board was one of my best friend's child was in the DHH program at Scarborough, and I didn't understand why he was driving all the way across town to take his child to elementary school. I was new to the district. My son was only in first grade, so I didn't quite understand. And when he described how that program has made his son's life so much more fulfilling and incredible, I just, I wanted to be a part of it. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that DHH program at Scarborough. It's incredible, and thanks to them for being part of the district.
Robbie, you got some?
Quiet tonight.
All right. So today is February 1st, and it is the start of Black History Month, so I'm going to start my comments with some words from my favorite writer and civil rights activist, James Baldwin. He wrote, "For while the tale of how we suffer and how we are delighted and how we may triumph is never new, it always must be heard." And I will submit that while we are more than the worst things that we have done in this country, we must continue to acknowledge the trauma that was done and the trauma that can still be felt to this day. Oftentimes, when we talk about race, it can be very divisive and painful. But I will submit that we all feel that pain, whether you're black, white, orange, brown, or whatever. It's painful for all of us. So instead of running from that pain, we should embrace it, embrace the discomfort, because it's in that discomfort that we can all grow.
Dr. Decker?
Well, thank you all for so many comments tonight. Really appreciate it. The first thing on my list was Black History Month, and certainly am not nearly as eloquent as you are, Mr. Boyd, but I am, as usual, you know, thrilled that we will be recognizing that as a system this month, and getting our staff and our students involved in that celebration this month, Black History Month. It's also CTE, Career Technical Education Month, so that's a nice connection with the presentation that we had tonight. So that will be coming as well. I also just want to mention, you all certainly know this, but on the agenda tonight was an MOU with ONEA and the Bargaining Unit around potential contract times for next school year, which is really kind of the next step in the process, if you will, in order for us to get to that spot, to be able to tell the world, here's when the doors will open, and here's when the doors will close, and all those kinds of things, especially at the elementary level. So the board did pass that tonight, so the vote is out right now with the Bargaining Unit, so they're thinking about that and voting and what have you. So I think that opens through the week, or remains open through the week, next week, for our staff members that are part of that group to vote as well. I also just want to mention that this is a really busy time for those in our district who are in HR. Lots of screening interviews and hiring people for next year, but equally important, also taking time to work with people retiring from our system, as we have a lot of expertise and excellence leaving us at the end of this year, the work that it takes to help people understand retirement options, and do all that with patience and grace is a really important thing that our HR team does this time of year, so I wanted to mention that as well. Next week is also Kansas School Lunch Week, so if you've not had a school lunch recently, they are more delicious than ever.
At Scarborough.
At Scarborough. Let's go there for lunch. Yes, we should all meet there for lunch one day next week. But I just want to say thank you to everybody that works in food services for our district. We do run the biggest restaurant in Kansas City every single day here in the Olathe Public Schools. So many people that just do an amazing job with that. This week, we found out that we have two of the top 10 high schools in the Kansas City Metro. Niche is a website that does all sorts of different analysis with things, but a lot of it is really just people's perceptions when they go on and fill out surveys about the schools where their kids attend school, but also look at data and things like that. And Olathe North and Olathe Northwest were both on the top 10 list, and we just found that out this week. So really great recognition for both of those schools as well. I also just wanted to mention the thanks to Travis for the presentation about our CTE Center tonight. You know, as I see that, and I see the programming that's going to be there, and so many of you have mentioned this tonight, but a home for access and focus, mental health services that are designed to be mental health services to treat students with dignity and respect, and our staff, and all those kinds of things, the opportunities that that building and that complex, if you will, are going to afford the students in our district and our community for years to come is really going to be a showpiece, I think, for this district. So I just really want to thank Travis and all of our partners and his partners for all the work they've done there. And then last, I want to thank Mrs. Johann. She came to my office about 2 o'clock this morning, or this afternoon.
It felt like that.
It's been a long week, my friends. So 2 o'clock this afternoon, thank you. And she's been here since then, so it was a very quick get-ready-for-the-meeting tonight, and my first opportunity to really sit down and get to know her. As many of you said, I think you're just going to be a great addition to our district in a different capacity. You obviously are heavily involved in our district now, so welcome to the board and welcome to the amazing team that sits up here each month to make decisions for our students and our staff. So those are my comments.
Awesome. No executive session tonight?
I think for the first time since I've been the superintendent, we have no executive session tonight.
All right. Well, Board, any other comments? See you then. We adjourn.